I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Lisa, would you call roll, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Present.
Councilmember Alders, Councilmember Blake.
Here.
Councilmember Ringo.
Here.
Councilmember Ringo. President. Uh, City Planner, Scott, or Rose.
All right. So as I talked with Planner Stockman earlier, and I just talked with Lisa, the items that are on the agenda for tonight that are P and Z items, 3A, 3B, and 3C. There was a day in years past where we would take Tuesday meeting items and discuss them on Thursday, make adjustments, and then vote on them on Tuesday. Two problems with that was, one, if there were a lot of changes, staff had to scramble to get all the changes done before the Tuesday meeting and get them back to us. If there weren't any changes, the residents who were there on Tuesday said, "How did you get to that decision?" because we never heard any of the discussion. So we decided not to do that anymore and stick to items that we have been trying to get to that take a little longer and tie up the council meeting. So work sessions are typically that. Technically, this is a council meeting. Work sessions are council meetings, so voting is allowed. But we typically have tried to keep these, this year, to items that need more attention. We have a work session coming up in November. I believe it's the 5th, and then we'll be meeting with the sheriff at that time. So we expect that to be longer, and at this point, that's the only thing on that work session. So with that said, I would like to amend the agenda to remove from tonight's agenda 3A, 3B, and 3C. And before we get into the details on the other ones, which could take more discussion, I would like to take 3I and move that up to the top. So we can get that one. I should be able to deal with that one quickly. And then we'll go down DE, FG, and H.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
I'd also request that 3E, the plumbing corps, changes. Also, we removed, and we will discuss that at the Tuesday meeting.
All right. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
So the question for staff to Ms. Lortz and the public hearing process, is that just an FYI? I mean, or is there anything?
Unless you have questions. It just was directed by your request for council action. I did the research. I presented, I said, "Thank you" back to you, and that's sort of the...
I would say that that could also get moved to Tuesday.
So nobody has any changes on that one?
I looked through it, and I...
All right. So you'd like that moved to consent agenda on Tuesday?
Yes, please. Which one, you mean?
Item H, public hearing process.
Oh, yeah.
That was just an update for... That's what's on record?
Yeah. If you have any questions, please.
Yep. So with the amendments there, moving 3A, B, C, E, and H to the Tuesday meeting, which I think they're on there already, but to have those there and not to be discussed tonight, make a motion accordingly. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, a second, though.
A motion and a second. Motion by the mayor, second by Councilmember Ringo. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And while we're waiting for Bob, who's stuck in traffic, would you be amenable to start with the invoice?
Yes.
So the question that when, Lisa, when you sent out your question, and I was trying to follow your explanation on the email, what was the invoice that was going to be sent out? How much was that for?
Can you explain? I don't know. There's more than one invoice here. Like, you're talking about Hawkinson's invoice or the Cody?
Well, the Cody invoice.
It's just... So do you want me to just explain it? I don't know what...
Well, so what I'm saying is, when I got the original email, it says on the Now Then City invoice to James Cody, balance due 28250.
Yes.
Is that what we would have sent to them? Or what we're intending to send to them?
Yes.
Okay. So when I'm looking at the supplemental information that you sent out, the Hawkinson-Anderson, there's a 6282021, a $226, and a 5650 that says due. There's highlighted, and they say due.
There's not a 62821, it's 52821. On the first, 46235.
Mine says 628.
Yes, mine's... Right, oh, so here is Stockman.
Oh, okay. The services were rendered on 528. Okay, 62821. I'm following you, sorry. Okay.
Okay. So this says that that's due, and those two are due.
Yes.
And those two total, 5650 and 226, are 28250, which appears to be the balance due.
Well, okay, I... Do you want me to explain how I came to this conclusion?
Yeah.
How it's due. Okay, so for the order for them to get their deeds, they had to pay what was current. So they came into the office on June 3rd and paid 198. Are you following me that on the invoice here?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Okay. Well, prior to that, Hawkinson emailed me saying these two services were rendered, add that to the invoice to make it current. So I added the services for 528 and 61. So it was 113, and then 113 is 226. Well, I, when I got this invoice on 628, I'm like, well, okay, so they paid this already, right? I'm looking at this thinking they paid this. And then, so it would only have been 5650 that was due. And I'm like, okay, well, I'll hold on to this and I'll find out, because for $56.50, is this something that we billed for? Or do we just let that go? How much do we nitpick about all of this? Then I got this next invoice, 72721, that showed a date of 61. And I went, wait a minute, this is confusing. So I looked into it deeper, and I realized they paid the 61, and they paid the 528, and they hadn't paid the 510 and the 511, because nobody ever billed for that. Does that make sense?
Maybe. What gets it confusing is 113 an hour, it all adds up to the same thing. The... What I didn't understand, in your emails explaining it, you said, "At the time, 5650 was not something we would pursue." So you were saying, because it was a small amount, we would just write that one off.
Well, I was looking into that. Like, is this something that we bother with? Or do we not bother with it? You know? So I outlined it in the email. I explained, at the time, it was something that, would we pursue that or not? And then I got the invoice for the 727. And then I kind of did the math, and I looked into it, and I went, wait a minute, there's still charges for the Cody's on 727? So I went back and looked more detailed at it. And then I went, oh, okay, this is back to the 5th month of the year. What is May here?
May. So on the 727, there's a... There's two, Brand Name Storage and Cody Lot Split. And actually, three, the Council Trust. So on that, that bill was 61. They communicated on 63 what the total bill was. And we gave the Cody's a paid in full then, at that point?
Well, it's never paid in full. The statement always says that there may be charges, and it's that haven't been billed from the contract. So when they came in, they have to be current to receive the deeds. They have to be paid up to the current billing that the city has.
So what, on the 628 invoice, 46235, that we got, it says 113 was paid, and the 5650 and the 226 were due. And on the 727 invoice, it says the 61, 113 was paid. So the 528, 113, one hour, and the 61, one hour, both indicate paid. And our invoice to them is 28250. So that's what I was confused with. Because all of this seems to have taken place before they came in and paid their sum and picked up their deeds.
Well, they came in June 3rd.
Right.
Yeah, so this is May 11th, May 10th, May 11th, May 28th, and June 1st.
But Hawkinson didn't bill the city until...
628. So how can we ask for billing this?
Well, because it says Hawkinson emailed me all the services provided so I could invoice the Cody's at that time.
Well, it says right here on the invoice, Hawkinson-Anderson emailed the invoice. They told me that there was 528 and 61, and it was $226.
And so when you sent out the explanation, 63, Hawkinson mailed, emailed the service provided so I could invoice Cody's at that time in order for them to receive their deeds, according with the county, to release the deeds, the billing needs to be current, not necessarily final. The billing is not final until all invoice has been received from the contractors. 628, Hawkinson sent 46235 to the city for 28250. I believe this to be the charges that were sent to me via email, plus 5650. But actually, 226 and 5650 is 28250. So I think that 5650 is actually in that 282, it appears. So the question, I guess, to clear this up, is what you're hoping is that... What you proposed to the council is that we issue a balance due of 28250.
Yeah. That's what is owed, according to all the billing. I break it down by dates specifically to the subject that the contractor bills. I've made it clear, I take it verbatim from the bill, from the contractor, Rupi Hawkinson, and the planning company, LLC. If you look at all the dates of all the services that they provided, and the date it was invoiced, and the invoice number, it's just a matter of math. So I shouldn't have, I guess, had Hawkinson email invoices to be current. I should have, you know... But that's what I was instructed to do, was have Hawkinson send me so that they could be, you know, up to that date in billing so that they could get their deeds. So that's what I did, and hence the, you know, I thought this was... I'm just trying to recoup the costs, that's all. Like, that, and I, you know, so I'm just laying it out there.
Mr. Mayor.
Planner Stockman.
Yeah. I... Lisa followed everything the way she's supposed to do. This is very common for all applications, to get a billing after, especially a lot split or something, to get a delayed billing. I guess I would double-check with Hawkinson to be sure it wasn't double-billed, and that it was just truly a delayed billing. And then... And then it would be legitimate, I guess, to send the invoice.
Yeah, well, I guess I'd like to see it double-checked. Counsel can weigh in on it. I... Because every invoice I see on Hawkinson's bill is prior to 63. So if they emailed over on 63, now, these don't have invoice numbers on them, but invoice 46235 should have all been on that email. And 46406, if it's a 61 billing date, should have been on that.
It should have been on the invoice for 62, for 6880, but it is not. Because if you go in date order, these 510 and 511 charges should have been on, I mean, I'm sorry, the... Yeah, the previous invoice, the 46068 on 531. I misspoke. So Hawkinson-Anderson invoice on 531, number 46068, has 472021. They should have put the 51021 and the 51121 on that invoice, because this invoice was 531. But it's not uncommon that they send a end of a month, and it's the previous month. All right, does that make sense? Like, April's is in May, and May's is in June, and June's in July?
Yeah, it's usually a little delayed. But I remember talking to Barry and saying, "Cody's are going to be, you know, filing, recording their deeds. Do you have any charges?" So that's why I questioned whether it was billed twice or not, I think. It would just be worth asking, and then if not, then it's...
Check it again.
Then it's over.
Yeah, so I agree. I agree with Liz. I think it's worth asking, double-check. The hard part is, I'm assuming Hawkinson, when they do this... So Barry's got half an hour on reviewing legals, an hour on review legals and exhibits and write memo, and an hour on review easements and legals, and then another, review documents and write memo. So I'm assuming, since they're all different dates, those are four different things.
Right, because there were property legals, there were easement legals. So those were, and those came at different times.
All right. So is the council okay with staff going back to Hawkinson and just making sure that we didn't accidentally... They didn't accidentally double up on something here? Because it looks like the 510 and 511 are the ones we're charging them for. On our invoice of 62821, we have Barry Wagner, review legals, review legals and exhibits and write memo, 510 and 511, which are the two marked on Hawkinson invoices still due. And that would add up to 28250.
So you're directing me to check that 510 and 511 have not been previously billed?
If that's what the council would like. Counsel?
Yes.
I see all nodded yeses. All right. Thank you. All right. Mr. Rupi. Question was, why are you here?
Question was, why are you here?
And I told them that I talked to the League. The League called you. You called me and said you need to be at the meeting.
Well, I did get a call from the Minnesota Cities Human Resources Department who told me that they had consulted with the litigation attorneys at the League, and they strongly recommended that I be here when this matter was considered. And I think their concern was that someone may speak out of turn. In other words, the issue before you tonight, as I'm assuming you're aware, is Lori submitted her resignation. And basically, it says, "If that can be made with consent," she said she's going to work for 30 days pursuant to the terms of her contract. The contract we had with her says she's going to give us at least 30 days notice. And she's going to abide by that. But the need to accept her resignation, and the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust was concerned, natural insurance carrier, was concerned that if there was any discussion relating to that letter of resignation, any of the terms or factual allegations contained therein, that we might be, as a city, violating certain rights that Lori has as an employee, and she still is an employee of the city. And therefore, they had recommended, in these situations, it's their custom practice to always recommend that the city attorney be present so that if somebody starts to make a comment that may violate some of Lori's rights for privacy, that I can step in and basically hopefully prevent any violations and what their view is, prevent any potential lawsuits in the future. So I told the HR director that I would contact the mayor and suggest that I attend tonight's meeting. I had planned on being here a long time, but construction seemed to conspire against me, specifically the overcrossing in St. Michael, where they happen to be moving a big piece of equipment and blocking one lane of travel they have. And then, as I get here, I notice that every single road to get to Now Then seems to be blocked, further conspiring against me. But I did remember that if I hit Bow Street eventually, I knew I was gonna, if I took a left there, I'd hit something I knew, a road. And eventually, that's how I got here. I apologize. It's my error. I should have... I just, I drive that stretch in St. Michael every day, and I've never been blocked before, and I didn't anticipate it tonight.
Well, that construction here, we're actually building a moat around Now Then, so...
And, you know, I like the communities like this. It's exclusive, you know? And, but the reason that I'm here tonight is because the League had suggested strongly that I be here. And just, they said they tell everybody this, as a matter of course. And I said, okay, I have no problem. I had called Jeff and asked him, "Do you want me here?" And he said, "If the League is recommending it, then yes." It may be for nothing, but the issue before you tonight is accepting Lori's resignation. It is a requirement that you accept it by motion. You acknowledge it, that you've received it. She is agreeing, at least in the letter of resignation that I received, that she would work the 30 days required by the contract. And the other things that you probably will want to at least think about tonight, either address tonight or at Tuesday's meeting, is where do you step forward? Because time is now of the essence. She has given her notice. She said she should comply with the contract to work the 30 days, and that's great, because that gives us some leeway here. But the last time we did this, a couple of years ago, it took a few months. And we had to use the services of an interim administrator. And so I would encourage the council, either tonight or at Tuesday's meeting, to talk about what the next steps are. Some of this is stuff that you just did a few years ago, and Cory gave her notice, but it has to be redone. So if you may want to consider looking over the job description, looking over interim administrators from the League, those types of things. I believe in the past, a couple of years ago, what you did was you appointed a committee to do some of this initial legwork. No decisions were made by the committee, but they were the ones that sort of... It takes some time to try and find at least an interim person to come in, because a lot of times, it's distance. It's also a cost factor, because some of these interim administrators charge more than others. There's, and so again, like last time, I think you hired Bob Daris from St., he used to be with St. Michael, over by my, in my office. So again, he's no, I didn't notice on the League's list that he's no longer on that list, so he may have completely retired. But there are others, and it's going to take some time, I think, for you guys to find somebody, if you wish, to come in and step in and fill Lori's shoes, until you can find someone else that you believe is qualified and should take over.
So to clarify, what you're saying is, this is a yes/no motion? And the specifics of performance or the details of resignation letter, those are not to be discussed at this point?
Tonight, I would say, because that would go into whether the merits of Lori and how Lori either did or didn't do her job, you know, whatever, that cannot be discussed. That is, that goes into employee review. And she is, and you, under the Open Meeting Law and Data Practices Act, she needs to be given an opportunity to have any such review. And you always have the right to do it while she's an employee here, even whether you accept it now or... You can't do a review. But she has to be given that opportunity to keep it private.
But in this case, it's simply accepting the resignation she put in. Now, we have a meeting scheduled for later this month. It was, the intention of that meeting is to talk about communication between council and staff in particular, but how we communicate. It's something we started, I guess, in February. We just haven't actually got on to completing. So we already scheduled that. In that discussion, if we're not getting into specifics of employee performance, but what the council sees as deficiencies that need to be cleaned up, improvements that need to be made as we go forward, that wouldn't violate any of this, as long as we're not talking about specific personnel.
If you are talking about, I'm assuming you're talking about some sort of a workshop on how to have better communication between the council and staff...
Yeah.
Going forward, I think that is an appropriate discussion to have, especially given the light of the statements contained in the letter of resignation. I think that is something that you should always consider, because that would always benefit everybody. But if, at that time, if it gets to the point where you're talking about deficiencies in any certain employee, then I would shy away from that, because you cannot do that. You guys are an employer, but you're not a private employer. You're a government employer. And therefore, all employees have certain rights under the Data Practices Act and the Open Meeting Law. And so, and we have to comply with those. So if that is the wish of the council to have any sort of discussion about the clerk's performance, then I would look at that as an official employee review, and you would have to give... And you would have to give the clerk the opportunity to have that closed. If the clerk says, I want it open, that's her right. And in statute, she can elect that. And then, that discussion would be in an open session.
But if the council uses that scheduled work session to discuss systematic or system deficiencies and system improvements without talking about personnel, I mean, just saying, you know, if we're talking about emails, or we're talking about who hears what when, or how communication is, the things that we had on our agenda last February, how do we proactively communicate? How do we set up?
Okay. So if you're talking about like,
Regardless of who's in the position.
With, who, you know, should we do this by email? When do you want document? When do you want to receive your packet? When do you want to receive information from residents that the staff may receive? When do you want to get information from your consultants, Liz or myself? You know, how early in the process do you want to see that material? That is a perfect example of things that should be discussed here. If you want to talk about roles, who should be interacting with staff? Who should be getting this information? Is it everybody? Is it only if you request it? All of the kind of things, stuff so that staff understands. Staff already, I know Liz and I, as your consultants, understand, we work for the council. You know, arguably, people will tell me all the time, well, you work for us, we're the residents. No, I don't. I work for you as a city council. And under the rules of professional responsibility, you guys are the client, not the residents. They're the beneficiaries of my work for you. But you guys are the ones that are elected, and you make the calls. And so that would be something that you definitely would probably want to have discussions on. And which ways are, what is working and what is not? And if somebody feels that this, something is not working, well, then, of course, that would be an opportunity for people to talk about that. And let's figure out, okay, you may not agree, as a member of the city council, with that person's viewpoint, but it's something to be worth considering. And also to see if there's a way to address it. Because everybody has stuff to bring to the table. And this, that would be, I'm assuming that would be in a workshop sort of situation?
Yeah, we've got scheduled for the 25th of this month, a workshop for that particularly. And obviously, going forward, we'd want to get that ironed out. So somebody new stepping into this, steps into a settled thing, and that's something we're still trying to handle.
Anything that you can do that you would make it clear what you, as a council's, expectations are of staff or consultants. You know, we, everybody works at your pleasure, including the employees. And so, at this point, yes, I think that would be a valid, valid use of your time. I don't see any downside for you guys. If it got to the point where it was getting acrimonious, or it was getting into a position where there was some sort of a discussion about specific employees' actions or inactions, other than generalities, then I would suggest that that be, wait, you wait on something like that until you can consult with me, and then move on with an employee review, where that would be the appropriate method.
But if it's just a generic position, communicating between whoever leading the staff portion of the city, whoever that is, not getting into any specifics of what we've done in the past by person, but just practices as the council that we want to do or don't want to do going forward.
Yes, that is perfectly acceptable.
As long as you stay out of the personnel side of things.
Yes. As long as you are trying not to go into the personnel side of it, which is exactly what the concern was of the League of Minnesota Cities. Because arguably, every time you have something like this, and especially with the statements made in the letter of resignation, I think the League was concerned that there was going to be some statements made, and then people would, and I know what their concern was. There, people, when some statements are made, there's going to be, somebody wants to make a statement to defend themselves or counter that. And they were seriously concerned that there was going to be someone who overstepped the bounds, and that we were going to be potentially in a lawsuit or a claim type of form. And they were worried about that.
Mr. Mayor?
Planner Stockman?
I just have a question for Bob. So when you say Lori can go public with her review, then don't you have to get into the specifics at that point?
Well, it is a review at that point in time.
Right, right.
But she has the right, any employee has the right, to have that be private. Now, the law says that the city council has to announce which employees, you know, we're going in a closed session to do the employee review for employee Liz Stockman. And we are going, and then you go in there, and then you have to give a summary of what was discussed. And it can't be, we had a review. It has to be a summary of kind of what was discussed. But the intricacies of the thing are not something that is made public. It is something that, but it is tape recorded. And that is because you want to have the assurances of that the council is not using that as a cover to talk about something else that's not germane to that employee review. And so, and the only time you don't tape record of going in a private session is when you are talking to me in the attorney-client privilege. And that because law says that's sacred. And number two, I think they're supposed to believe that I, as your city attorney, am making sure that you're not violating any other laws. But other than that, and if somebody does, I guess I'll just tell you, if somebody does make an allegation that you guys were talking about that road project during Liz Stockman's review, then what happens is that tape recording would go to a district court judge. And the judge would look at it and call it in camera, which means in his office, his chambers. And they listen to it. They make that determination. They listen to the tape, and they say, no. And the court either says, no, it's not a violation, and this is all dismissed. Or, yeah, there is. And then that becomes evidence. And then that gets sealed, and that now becomes evidence in the case against the city council. So, but tonight, the only thing that is before you is to make a decision whether to accept.
Turn on your microphone, Bob.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, turn your microphone on.
I'm sorry, I thought it was on.
Is it on now?
Yeah.
Yep, thank you. Sorry. Sorry, I'll speak slower. I just did the minutes for another city when the clerk was ill. And man, I don't know how you do it. Luckily, I did most of the talking, so I kind of remembered what I had talked about. And I was much more eloquent in the minutes. But the, but tonight is, what's before you is really, is just that resignation. And then, either tonight, or I'd encourage you on Tuesday night, but sometime, discussion of where do you go from here? Because time is of the essence. The, and back to, I guess, Planner's question. This is not a review, you know. And I don't know that we're planning on reviewing, since she's resigned. And right now, we're hoping that her concentration is training staff on everything they need to know before she leaves. But should the council decide there needed to be a review, then she can decide whether it's public or private.
Correct.
Open or closed. Okay, so tonight, it's a simple yes/no vote on receiving the resignation. And then, as you say, the sooner we get moving forward, the better.
So Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainey.
So based on the advice of the attorney, I move that we accept the resignation of our city clerk, Lori Strike. And if approved, that we then remove that item from the Tuesday, October 12 council agenda, as we will already have taken action on it.
All right. I will second that. We have an emotion and a second. Any other comments? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And I want to follow up then, as you were saying, the time is of the essence. As you mentioned, that three years ago, we were in this same process. The council appointed two people to serve as a committee to work with the League on identifying an interim for a period of whatever, however many months it is. Basically, to close out the year and help us in going through the proper procedures to find a full-time replacement. Having done this three years ago, I understand the process with the League. There's a nine pages checklist, and there's a variety of questions you can ask, questions you can't ask. There's quite a bit. Ultimately, it will come down to the council. Once, once the process is, to a point of decision-making, the council will make that decision. But there's a lot of things that the committee and the interim can do to facilitate this. So I would like to see us go forward with that committee and having.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
I would suggest a committee of no more than two city council members. Because if you have three, then you have a quorum.
Yeah, and we went through that before. And one of the problems was, if you have a quorum, there's not a lot of people that want to apply, because they haven't necessarily given up their current job. And if it's a quorum, it's public. And so in the, in the research part of it, they can stay incognito until they're finalists. Once they're finalists, then that is public information, and that all goes to the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to hold that off until Jason's here, so we have a full council to make a decision on what two people are going to be on that. There's only four of us tonight. He can't, his job called him away. So, and I think everyone should be here for that, because that's big.
Counsel?
It's not that many days. We're meeting in a couple of days. We can wait until Tuesday.
Just my advice is that at Tuesday's meeting.
We do it.
Yes, you gotta at least start the process, because time will get away from you.
Right.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainey. I think that'd be a good idea if the entire council weighs in on who the two delegates will be.
Okay. So we will add that to the council section of the Tuesday meeting. And at that point, we can discuss the next steps. All right. And if any of the council members have any questions regarding this whole process and stuff? Because I know Mary and Jeff and Joel, weren't you part of that as well three years ago?
I kind of was in the process of being voted in. And I was getting my feet wet by attending council meetings. So I got to see the tail end.
If anybody has any specific questions, please feel free to give me a call, and I'll try to answer them as best I can.
Great.
Because it is unique. It's new, you know. All right. So we'll keep moving. So looking at the rest of our agenda items here, we have accessory building ordinance, planning fees in similar communities, and the process diagram and checklist. Am I missing anything there?
No, I think that's it.
All right, so Planner Stockman, do you see any further need for Attorney Rupi in any of those three?
Item B would be good, and then F.
All right. Are you, can you stay for those?
I can. I'm at your pleasure. But I gotta pull up, I'm going to just turn on my computer, because I didn't print out the packet.
Oh, I, did you ask, sorry, did you ask if I, we needed Bob?
Yes.
No, I don't think we need Bob for this.
Okay, that's what I was asking. That's all right.
You get to go home, Bob. We don't need you.
So go home and watch Thursday Night Football. Okay, yeah, I can do that.
No, I, I was wondering if you need to stay around. And I didn't know that there was anything in there, but since you said yes.
No, nothing real sensitive or.
I will say, just as you leave, Bob.
I'm sorry?
Shane left us the information on Toft, which we will now be able to.
I was part of all of that. And I have my Toft file with me. I didn't know if that was, if anybody.
It's not on our agenda, but we have it too. In case we need a little light reading over the weekend, we can.
It was my understanding that somebody from the Toft development was going to be addressing the council on Tuesday?
They will be in attendance.
They will be?
Mrs. Toft will be here, I believe, with her attorney.
Then I will probably be here as well.
Yes, I would.
Six o'clock on Tuesday?
Seven.
Seven?
That gives you time to get around the big trucks.
Yeah.
Everything is, is it one main, is it, what was that, line road or something? They're ripping it all up?
Yeah, it's, it's everywhere.
Yeah, and it's going to get worse, because all of stoplights on Highway 10 are going to be addressed, and all the stoplights on 169. So the next three years is going to be, we might as well build a moat, because you're not going to be able to get here.
So I, Liz, maybe you can give me a call tomorrow? But I have heard nothing from their attorney.
Nor have I. And she just keeps saying that she's forwarding everything to her. And I don't, never, matter.
It may be one of those things where I may be, maybe if you want to save money, if you put me towards the front of the agenda with that. And that, but I'm at your pleasure. And, but yeah, I'll, I understand all the issues that are going on here. And if her attorney, and I've dealt with her attorney, at least one of the senior guy in the past. They know who I am. So if they want to give me a call, they can, they more than welcome to. And I'll plan on being here unless I hear otherwise, so.
Yeah, if their attorney's going to be here, and having looked at this packet, it sounds like we need you here.
Yeah.
Because if we, if we can't approve that road, that's a big deal.
Right. And there is no legal obligation for you guys to accept that road. If you guys, you know, Shane and his team have not been able to inspect it and stuff, and we're not sure what's there, then they either, you know, I've had, I've had other communities that we rip it up. We want to see it. We want you to do it. You didn't get our permission to do it. And other times, they've said, okay, well, we'll do it. But we want you to pay for certain core tests and soil borings and other stuff to make sure what the base is. And other times, I've had communities say, we're not going to accept it at all. And we have no legal obligation to do so. So that is now, you know, in a sense.
Not a good plan on an industrial road with the housing development on the back end of it.
Yeah, well, that's going to make it very difficult, because we may make it a CIC community or something else that ties it in, because this is going to be a private road. We want HOA.
All right, well, we'll talk about that on Tuesday, so.
So, yes, and then, and I don't know if you saw on my memo, but because, even though you noticed this is a workshop, this is a city council meeting. Under the Open Meeting Law, this is a city council meeting. The term workshop is not in there. That is your way of telling residents, we're really not going to be trying to make a lot of decisions here. This is more for us to work through things. But it does not prohibit or limit you from making any decisions. All perfectly legal. And so, and again, if you guys have any questions regarding any of this, let me know.
Thank you.
Is Shane going to be there on Tuesday night? Because a lot of this info is more or less, this meeting is interpretation of.
Well, I think Shane needs to be there. You know, typically, as we said at our first meeting of the year, that, you know, they normally check, and the consultants, the contractors get direction approval to show up. But I, if there's a question, I think Shane needs to be here, because the other two road projects, he's asking us to move on as well, so. We said you could communicate to Shane's office, or you guys aren't in for tomorrow, so who's?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was making notes.
So I'll see him, so I can ask.
You'll be in the office with him. Yeah, he, we need him here for this one and the two road projects that are on the agenda for Tuesday.
Okay.
All right.
And then I, and tell Shane I'll probably be giving him a call between now and Tuesday to talk about this and make sure that I understand everything. All right?
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Ari.
All right. We are looking at accessory buildings. We got an update on that. Tonight, it's got a map on the back.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Planner Stockman.
It was clear to me that in sometime, at some point in the past, the intention was to allow a smaller accessory structure forward of the house closer to the road. Currently, the, you know, the heart of the ordinance reads that the structure has to be at or behind that front setback. And the only time it can be in front of the home is if your house is more than 300 feet back from the road. So, the intention here is just to clarify and to create an ordinance that you want and like or need, and so, there are a couple, you know, question marks in here. But I did, as it was written, leave that as an option for a structure in front of the home.
Excuse me, Liz, was there a, a size limit previously? You said a smaller structure in front of the home, what was the?
The, presently, your reference is an 800 square foot building in front of the home closer to the road than the structure. But the confusing part was, the accessory structure shall comply with the minimum setback requirements for the principal structure. So, how can it do that? How can it be closer to the road and comply with the minimum setback requirement? So, it was very confusing. So, that was, number four is kinda where that started. One accessory structure may be located in the front yard, and the way it read was closer to the front lot line than the principal structure. But then it went on to say, provided it complies with the minimum setback requirements, which is 120 feet from the center line. So, that didn't make sense. So, I have tentatively changed it to say that one accessory structure may be located in the front yard or side yard in the case of corner lots, but not both, closer to the front or side lot line than the principal structure, provided the structure is not closer than 35 feet from the front property line or the side property line in the case of corner lots, or 70 feet from the street center line, whichever is greater. So, if that's something that you want to make an option, I do get requests for that kind of a thing, like a two-saw garage. People like to put them at a 90-degree angle to their primary garage that's attached, you know, to have extra parking, because we do have a limit on our garage sizes that are attached to the house. So, it is nice to have something in front. People that have the space can usually just put it right next to the garage. But because this was confusing and unclear, we really haven't been allowing, I have not been allowing that, because it wasn't clear what was allowed and where, so.
So, this would, this would clear that up.
Clear that up.
We would have the, the 800-foot maximum, which is a two-car garage typically.
It's a little bigger. 800 is a little bigger than a two-car, but I'm saying that's a typical request.
Two-car, and you're able to open the doors inside and?
Yeah, yeah, maybe, right, a little extra storage.
Yeah.
And then, so what I'm saying is, if this structure is in front of the home, it has to match your house. The roof has to match, the siding has to match, the color has to match as closely as you can, versus what we currently say for other structures is that they just coordinate.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And so, I think that's fair, if you're gonna be in front of the home and you want it to look nice. So, that 35-foot setback, or 70 from the center line, came from the other minimums we use in the commercial industrial districts, and then the 35-foot is also the minimum we use for a flag lot that you can be to your lot line, because some flag lots, you know, have really long driveways, and so, we say you can't be any closer than 35 to any lot line. So, then, item D4.
So, let me just ask you, you're saying in, in the 70 feet from the street center line, our setback is 300 feet?
Well-
Let's see, locate near the front line, principal structure, or 300 feet setback from the center line?
Or anything bigger now than 800. Anything bigger would have to go behind, yeah, the house, or, or equal to it. So, so, it looks like the house in materials, and then item D says, pole-style accessory buildings with sheet metal siding shall not be permitted unless the principal structure incorporates this style or material. So, just to clarify again, that it's gotta be more standard siding like a regular residential structure. And there wasn't, was and is an existing requirement that said, the building may not be located more than 60 feet from the principal structure or directly in front of it. Now, I can see why you wouldn't want it directly in front, although sometimes that might be the only option someone has. And I'm not sure, really, why, you know, you're trying to keep it close to the house with a separation limitation?
I think, and I have no idea why that was put in originally, but you would think that if it's more than 60 feet, you're probably talking a driveway of some sort. Or if you're putting it near the house, you're probably utilizing the drive that you have. I don't know, I'm thinking 60 feet's a fair amount of distance from the structure, but, but obviously, that's been in there for, forever long, so.
Yeah, I couldn't, I really couldn't figure that one out, I guess.
Has it ever been questioned? Has anybody ever said, I wanna put my structure more than 60 feet in front of that, and have it be in front of the house?
Nah, I don't know for certain, be, no, not that I can think of. But, I, I would agree that maybe we would want it to share the same driveway. I don't know if you wanna stipulate that or not. Or we just strike that one altogether, depending on.
I think, council.
More than 60 feet, so. Well, not more than 60.
Not more than 60 feet, nor directly in front of it. I don't think it, most people try to get it fairly close. I would say-
What is six, what's, what, give me a ballpark, 60, what's this bearing?
38.
Yeah, this is what, maybe 38, 35-ish.
So, they're giving them a lot, a lot, a little.
Yeah, yeah. Sometimes people wanna keep a space, which is wise, to get a car in their rear yard or a camper, or even a fire truck would be nice sometimes.
I see.
Other people wanna snug them up if they're limited.
If it's a garage, they're probably trying to get it as close to the house as it's attached, you know, like, close enough that it's a fire hazard, but close enough that you're not running in inclement weather, so. Depends on what they're using the, the building for, but.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
To Ms. Stockman, I guess my question on this would be, if passed as it is presented, if a property owner's land doesn't allow them, at no fault of their own, to meet these requirements, are they, they still are eligible to file for a variance?
Yeah.
For placement of a-
Yeah, yes, if, yeah, I mean, anything related to a setback or a size.
All right. All right, thank you.
For instance, if they have a really, no usable rear yard, you know, they may still come forward for a larger building in the front or something like that, yeah.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Well, I don't know, we could keep it in there and try it, it's, I don't think it's unreasonable, but.
Is this for E?
Yeah, E, right. Is there any reason, you know, why we would wanna limit the separation of the two, I guess? Yeah, it's, it's kind of arbitrary, if you ask me, but.
They want to go 70 or 80 feet, is that a big issue?
Well, as you say, one of the things we could do is leave it in there and see if anybody ever actually brings it up.
It's an issue.
Because it hasn't come up yet, and this has been in there, so.
Right.
It's kinda the things when we were codifying the, the ordinances previously, we were looking at, if you find yourself getting variance requests regularly, you should go back and look at your ordinance and say, why?
Mm-hmm.
Why?
Yeah.
But if this has never come up, I say, leave well enough alone and, and address if it starts becoming a problem.
Sure, we could do that.
And Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
To, to Ms. Stockman, again, and this is, so my, my question goes back to what would be number, the letter C, the, the matching, and this is just as it states on the front, is structures within the front yard, so.
Right, it's a subsection of four.
If a resident is gonna put a accessory structure in their backyard, it just is the, the-
It could still be metal, and, yeah.
All right, so I just wondered.
Complimentary, but not matching.
Right.
How far does that have to be from the neighborhood?
20 foot on the side yard and 35 on the rear yard.
Okay.
And if it's in, in front of the house, the rear yard's not an issue, anyway, because the house is already meets the setback.
Right, we still have, right, we'd still enforce the 20-foot side in the front yard and then 35. The only situation I can think of if, for someone had a real long driveway and wanted a shed closer to the street, or, I don't know why, but, yeah, I don't, but we'll just try it out, I guess.
All right.
What about people that build those, like little shelters for their kid, when they got long driveways, for their kids to stand in in the winter?
Well, that's another good question, actually, because if you look further, which is on page three, at the end of our accessory building section, number six says, one additional garden shed or playhouse structure. So, we, for the most part, determine the larger buildings based on your lot size, and then everybody gets an additional little garden shed or play structure.
Thought that moved to 200 square feet?
Um, no, that's a different section of the ordinance. You're right, you're right that anything under 200 does not require a permit. That's what you're thinking.
Well, so their shed doesn't, if they plant a little shed at the end of their driveway, they don't have to have a permit for that, if it's under?
Right, right.
Although, you know, they stand in those because of the, but they're seeing those on the road.
Yeah, so then, so, this would allow people to do that.
Yeah, I see that.
But then they couldn't put another one, you know, just one in the front, period.
Yeah, they can't have, carry your shed in the back, and, yeah.
So, and the, the 200 square feet, because I remember that, that challenge we were having up there in Xenon, and as long as he separated his buildings into 200-square-foot buildings, and we allowed him to, when they were joined, he couldn't have them, because they were too big. But he could have the sheds that were, as long as they were 200 feet or less, 200 square feet.
Well, right, he, but you're still limited to the number of structures. So, if someone's got three small sheds, then you don't, you either have to tear one down to get a bigger one, or, you know, there's still a limit on the number of structures and then an overall size.
So, if a, a home has been here for a long time, highlights almost all of these, there's nothing we can do, right?
We call it non-conforming.
And it's just left there, I mean, these people might be, have been in there for 40, 50 years, they're not gonna comply with all of this, right?
A lot of the farm structures.
Yeah.
If someone comes in and they are non-conforming, they can replace one in the same spot, or tear one down and do it that way, but we wouldn't let them add if they had, let's say, five.
Oh, we're not, yeah, I was just wondering.
All right, so, take that up on Tuesday, then? Anything, any other questions at this point?
Makes sense.
So, what you'll have on Tuesday is leave 4E in, and all the blue will be, what we'll be approving on Tuesday. Correct?
You want a clean copy, okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
I just have, the, the one concern I have is six, C6, and it's the one additional garden shed slash pay, playhouse type structure not exceeding 120 square feet is permitted. And Linda said, so you can either have a shelter for your children, or you can have a garden shed in the rear yard. I, I think you should be able to have both.
Well, that, that has come up, actually. So, I mean, that, that does come up, because people, so, you could say, maybe, maybe, Mary, how about this, if you, what if you took the 800, and you could total 800 and have two that are 400, or a little, or less? You want to do it that way or something?
Well, the shelters at the end of the driveway are-
They're, they're three by three.
Or three by four.
Yeah, they're just tiny, yeah.
You couldn't put your lawnmower in them, but.
And most of them, after their kids are growing, they're gone, you get rid of them.
Yeah, I, I think we need an exclusion for the, the shelters.
Yeah, I think that's just a temporary building for, as the kids are in school, most of them, but maybe you could specify that or something.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
So, could we say excluding a, a bus shelter, no more than a four-by-four?
16 square feet.
Yeah, or 20 square feet. I mean, the, the, what I think of it is, if you have two kids, a four-by-four, a three-by-three would be fine, but we have many families up here that have many children, and I don't, I don't know school bus routes, so I don't know if they're all out there at the same time or not, but, maybe a 20-square-foot maximum is excluded?
Three by, yeah, three by six is 18. Yeah, that's not unreasonable, I had-
Four by five is?
Yeah.
20, yeah.
20.
It's not unreasonable, I had one guy that wanted to incorporate his, you know, screening of his trash cans up there.
Mm-hmm.
So, it wasn't a bad idea either. So, so, you wanna add under six?
Yes, please.
One addition, one bus shelter, or up to 20 square feet?
If council thinks that's appropriate.
I think so. Anybody else disagree? Sounds good. All right.
We're not doing a five tonight, right?
That's it?
We're not gonna do a five tonight. When you go five and dash five.
No.
Going to planning fees in similar communities.
Right.
You say you did a lot of this here. Different things for us here.
Yeah, she did.
Yep. And we'll just take most of it.
Well, you saw before my breakdown of invoicing by year, and then a few meetings ago, I was asked to provide a more detailed analysis of the zoning fees by the project types. And so that's one of the charts. Provides averages for the different application types, and the typical number of hours it takes to, uh, review and process those. So plaits and subdivisions are the most costly, take, take the longest amount of time with the extra reviews, we've got engineers involved for one, and usually revisions to the surveys. And then, um, you know, details such as reviewing a development agreement, uh, or in the case of our deferral of street paving, we've got many development agreements, um, you've got additional descriptions for easements and, um, strange and utility easements, those kinds of things. And then, you know, plat, uh, excuse me, variances, IUPs, CUPs, and rezonings are kind of in the same ballpark price-wise, between twelve and fourteen hours from start to finish.
And Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raino.
To Ms. Stockman, and these are, you had talked about it, um, are these just your fees, or are these also including legal and engineer?
No, these are just planning fees, yeah. So these were actual costs of these certain projects that I researched over the last three years. You know, generally, the bigger the land area, the more expensive it gets. So, you know, in summary, we were not, um, the CODIS, for instance, were not necessarily out of the, you know, this ballpark, um, and then, nor was, um, the vacation, easement vacation for Mr. Haysman. I highlighted that on the right side. We have very limited easement vacations, there's only been five since, in the last ten years. So, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake.
What were we looking for when we asked for this? I'm not sure what I'm supposed to be looking for.
Well, I, I think this is kind of morphed from our cost for planning to see, you know, as, as, if you look at the fee comparison with the five cities, it was, are, do other people have in-house planners? If your city our size, you have in-house planners, uh, contract planners, and, and what are the similar costs that they're charging? Because the accusations are going to come back, you need to turn your microphone back on there too. That people are going to come back and say, "We're, we're extravagant," and we have the, the accusation that it's too costly to build in now, that, and we're looking at, we're trying to see, is how does it compare at other places?
Well, this would be a good thing for us to show them, I guess.
Yes, it would.
I mean, I, if a residence says, "This seems outrageous," and say, "Well, we did do, you know, um, comparison chart, and we'd like to show it to you, so you can see what the plant, what the cost is in other cities similar to our size, so this is really quite valuable for that."
Liz, what, what on the zoning fee comparison, what does it mean under Linwood and in one of our boxes checklist?
That, that was me, what, this is what I did this?
So minor subdivision in our park dedication, trail fee, and then it says checklist.
The check, oh, that, just that we have-
And then down in Linwood, under plat, um, other, it says checklist, CUP, IUP checklist, and variance is checklist. So what, what do those refer to?
That's a good question, because it's been a long time since I did this, so I couldn't really-
Yeah, in fact, we had a purpose for that.
And, and at this point, we now have the current census numbers.
Yeah, we're down.
So, if we're down to forty, forty-five, thirty-six, um, our density per square mile probably went down too. So our, our change went down in our density per square mile, I think our change is like two percent. I think that's ego's is like thirty percent.
Oh, I remember what checklist was for. You had asked if cities have a checklist, because Liz was putting together a checklist. You were requiring her to create a checklist?
Yeah.
And that's what that was for, cities that have checklists.
So Linwood has a checklist for each of those plaits?
For these, for a plat, yes.
Use permits and the variance.
Yes, I see, okay.
And now, does this mean we do when there's a checklist need next to other?
Yeah, yeah, there is, she created a, that's in the, um, later in the discussion. She created a checklist and a, um, estimate.
For these fees?
For the, yeah.
Yes, the intent is to have checklist for everything, so that you just have a packet of information, yeah, that we give everybody.
So we save them these price, right?
Yeah, you don't want to see it.
Exactly.
That's the intention, yes.
Right, so they get a pretty good idea of something generally.
And part of this whole, um, process was, or previous discussions, was whether the city was going to consider, um, you know, surplus or having any sort of a flat fee versus the pass-through fees a hundred percent. Uh, so, but we, with the, with the research done, it's very clear that, yeah, the cities of our size and makeup are doing consultant. Uh, and the ones that weren't had, were losing money on the deal, right and left.
And in the process of looking for one, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, so we have some information to evaluate. The first spreadsheet is breakdown of zone, breakdown of zoning fees by project type within our own community. Second one, city of now then zoning fee comparison with Scandia, Independence, Columbus, and Linwood Township. And we have a map showing where those places are. Alright, so we can put that with our other information on, well, previously with our planning discussion. Anything else we need to talk about on this tonight?
Um, no, not the fees.
So, would it be reasonable to, uh, now that we have 2010 census, rather than projected population, to go back and review those numbers, update those numbers?
No, sure, we could update the chart.
So just updated to give to residents considering options, you mean? Or why would we update this chart? You're going to use this to give to people who are applying, is that why you would update the chart?
No, I'm just saying that we have, we, we're using it as a record, and right now, the population numbers were, I'm guessing, everybody on here is estimated by Met Council, because they're the ones who do the estimating. And now we have actual census numbers that have been in for each of the cities, so we would have census numbers that are accurate, and therefore changes our density per square mile. I just, I don't want to have something that we know isn't, is no longer accurate to be used as, as part of our, if we're going to show it to somebody, here's how now then compares to other cities, and, and yet we know, since the census numbers have come in, this is no longer accurate.
So we just have a 2020 census column, and then, um-
Density, you want?
Update our date on here, yeah, and then the density would change a little bit.
Yep. So the change would, would drop to two percent or whatever it is, and then, per square mile. Those things factor in, like, like when contractors are coming in to do gas, or internet or something like that, that density, density per mile is a factor for them, so we just want it to be accurate.
Be accurate, yeah.
Alright. So we have the process diagram, and, you know, and I was, I was going to bring this up, Linda, and so I'm glad you asked that. When, when we do things like this, we need to say, what is this, and, and what are we hoping to get out of it? So, so we don't spend, you know, an hour talking about something and not really sure where we're going with it. So what's the end goal? So, we've got the last item on our list, the process diagram and checklist. And I will say, we've asked for this checklist, we've been talking about it for eons here. And, uh, so you now have a development review process and responsibility matrix, application schedule, if somebody wants to know when they need to get things in, this gives them some target dates. Have a minor subdivision checklist. We have a consultant fees checklist and acceptance statement. We have a site and building plan review. And then the other one is the public hearing checklist.
I just want to say that you did a nice job getting this all together, girls.
Thank you, thanks. Um, I have really-
I think it'll be really helpful, and it's clear. I mean, I got it all probably more carefully, but I went scanned it all before I came, and this would be helpful. I think it all these zoning application fee and consultant rates, and it's pretty straightforward. And so you kind of know, and then if they say, "Well, it's not, it's way out of web," you're going to have this sheet to say, "Well, let me show you what it's like in neighboring cities of our population." I think it's great.
So the, uh, so one of the comments I have is, when we first started talking about this earlier in the year, we, we said, "Let's get the checklist documented," you know, obviously we want it to be as understandable to, because quite often it's novices out, and, and now then we're talking about people that haven't done much of this. You get into some of the more developed communities, you're dealing with contractors and developers who do this all the time.
Right.
So we were, we were really targeting this for the novice. And so one of the recommendations we had is, once we got to a point where the council said, "Yeah, this makes sense," we would like to run it by people who have recently gone through the process in now then, and say, you know, "Obviously, this is going to be helpful compared to what you had before. Is there something from your experience that we're missing, or that's not understandable?" And one of the things when, at work, when we do, um, process control documents and things like that, we always take it to somebody in a different department and say, "You are an administrator up front, can you follow this work instruction?" And, and that's where you find out that you went from A to C, and they didn't know how, they didn't understand B, while everybody in the shop did. So I would like to recommend that, yeah, we have our discussion tonight, that we pick some candidates that have been through the process recently and, and ask them to review it as well. And say, "This is what we think is going to do it, any other feedback?" I think it would be good for community involvement and, and good support. And if we miss something, they'd be the ones that tell us, and if not, uh, they'd be the biggest supporters, so.
I did have Marie McCallum looked at it, and I shared it with one other applicant, and they, they were impressed by just, well, it was someone that's not familiar with lot splits, and they said what I thought they'd say, which was, "Oh, I didn't realize there were so many steps."
Yeah.
And, which is good, because it's kind of a point is to make those all clear. Uh, and then one thing that just came to me that I didn't do that we talked about many months ago was to sort of have a, um, a definition list of what these things mean.
Yes. Because, because again, as, as, we talk about it all the time, and, and I remember one of our meetings this spring or summer, and people say, "What, what do those terms mean?" It's like, you know, we need to understand that we're talking inside lingo here, so.
I guess that would be a glossary, wouldn't it?
Yep. That would be a glossary.
An old library days.
Heart analog.
I could still use that glossary.
You wouldn't come, we all.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raino.
I just have a question on the, on the matrix.
Uh-huh.
Um, so, under number three?
Okay.
Application submitted, sixty-day review period starts if application is complete. I like to say, "When application is complete."
When, yeah.
Yeah, because that's-
Good point.
Yeah. And then the other question I have is, we have the planner on there, we have the engineer. We don't have legal, and there are different times that legal gets involved, so how do we fit that into it?
I think, well, maybe I-
Other, you got city attorney involvement will be required for review of legal documents.
On, on the other, okay.
On the next page. Share driveway, grievance, dedication, easement are necessary by the city staff.
Right.
So that is here.
Okay, alright, alright, and then, um, one of the questions I had early on in this process is, what can the homeowner or the property owner do themselves to limit the cost to them during this process? And then, um, is that noted anywhere? How do we get that information, you know, of, um, and I think it dealt with the wetlands or something that the homeowner can call Johnny Wetland supervisor, and get the information needed at no cost to them versus if you take the, the initiative, initiative to do that, that costs the homeowner, the property owner?
Well, it depends, yeah, if it's a subdivision, they're required to do a delineation by a professional. But, you know, they can call around for estimates like they would for anything else.
Okay.
If we have a, let's say, just a question about a setback from the edge of a wetland or something, sometimes, yes, we can call in, uh, Becky Wozni, and she will just comment, no charge, to, "I'm going out with her Monday to two different sites to, yeah, just help homeowners determine, are we able to cross this wetland with a driveway?" Or, you know, those kinds of things. So, she's very helpful.
I did, my, my, my concern is that if there are things a homeowner or landowner can do to help reduce their cost, that they be made aware of that.
Point those out, yeah, okay. That's if, maybe you just have a separate page, what can you do with them?
So on, on page two, this is one of my sticking points when we, we do this with planning and zoning.
Okay.
Page two.
Page two.
Page two of the matrix, alright. Page two of the matrix, right? So under number nine, P&amp;Z recommends, it says recommends approval or denial. Okay, it has a recommends. Because when they say, we vote to approve, they really need to state it as, we recommend to the council to approve. Because the people, again, that are new in the audience doing this, that I just got approval. And you always say, you got to come back to the council for the final, but they, you know, they're considering other stamp. And if everything's done right, probably should, typically would be a pass through.
Right.
But they need to understand that this is a recommendation, the council makes the decision.
And you'll notice that I did change that reference in the current findings that you'll see Tuesday.
I was just trying to find where I had seen that, so.
Thanks, I'm glad you noticed.
Yep, I did.
The question I have on some of the blocks where there's nothing, so as far as responsible party, 13, 15, 17, there's, there's, I guess, ongoing inspection by building official on 17, but driveway permit application, who's?
That's strictly property owner. So they make application at the time of, right before or at the time of building permit and then that gets sent to Joe if it's a local road. If, yeah, well, you're right, we could have a comment in here about county. Well, it does say, if the driveway runs on a county road, access permits should be obtained through those agencies.
Yeah, but in, in the case of a city road, they need to contact the office so Joe can go out and market. We don't have anything there as far as
Oh, where to go or?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
So just clarification?
Yeah, where and how, I guess, yeah.
So in the scheduled closings, following recording of all documents, the sale transfer of land may occur or applicant may proceed with building plans. How does that schedule closings? Recording of documents, property taxes must be paid in full for the year, deeds served. So that's the county government center, that's in the other category. Do we need to, like the situation tonight, do they need to enable to get their deed after everything paid with the city?
We
Before they go to the county?
We hold the deeds, so we have them sign and notarize the deeds, they bring them to the city, we always have to review them again to be sure something wasn't changed. And then, we make sure all the exhibits are attached and those kinds of things, so it'll go through the county without a hitch. And then, that's when we ask for final payment, our payment to date of the billings that we've gotten. And then we give all that back to them and then they take it. But we stamp them then that says approve for transfer or approve for recording and
Okay, so, so that's not on the matrix that I see? There's, there's, the 11 says deeds reviewed and notarized, findings of fact signed, MyLars prepared, development agreements signed.
So we can put a
And that's the city attorneys needed, so like, in a case like this, if there's MyLars being signed, I typically sign the MyLars.
Right, so they, the county engineer approves that, then they get the MyLars made and bring those to the city, right?
Yeah, so there's, there's, there's a gap there because I remember
Okay.
Having one, one resident, one applicant have to bring them to work and I'm sitting at the front desk signing MyLars.
Okay, I'll try to be more
I explained to my staff what was going on, so.
More detail there.
Yeah, because that's where, you know, we can have some hiccups that you know, deeds, deeds aren't going to be notarized until they're current with their billing, right?
Right.
You have to be careful, we say current.
Current is a good word, though.
Current.
Yes, yes.
Yes, so now we've got the note on there.
I concur that current is a good choice of
Yeah, so we've changed it to current because the note now says there may still be invoices coming in.
So Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Liz.
So kind of piggybacking off of what Mary said, property owner taking on responsibility and maybe helping them, that's good, but, and I agree with that, wholeheartedly disclaimer on that would be that keeping things moving along, then if there's a delay in whatever they're seeking, that, you know, who holds that accountable? Like, we need this, so you can be at this meeting at this time and this decision can be recommended or determined because you, you know, you delay an action, then that goes into another month and another month and another month because we're waiting?
Yeah, and I think that's where you, you take this as a packet and that's what we want to do is, is have a holistic approach. You've got an application schedule, says if you want to hit this date.
Yes.
Here, here you go.
Right.
Because we also have, if you go back to page one, the 60-day review period starts.
Yes.
Is anything that the landowner doing that to facilitate this at a lower cost, they think, going to affect that? If they hold a 60-day review, we're stuck. So we need to, we need to make sure that they understand the, the application schedule, they understand if they're taking something on that would affect the 60 days, we need some kind of disclaimer that says, if you're doing this, we don't consider the application complete until you've done your work.
Correct. And, you know, example being, people want to be their own contractor for building their house. They don't necessarily know that you need all these inspections and you need all these codes followed and it ends up costing them more money to build their house if they hadn't just hired a contractor, so.
Potentially, yeah.
Yeah.
But I, a lot of times what I see is people want to get the process going, so they'll say, where do I submit an application? And I'll say, well, well, not quite yet, we have to have the accompanying, you know, plans. So that's when I explain the 60-day thing.
So, so again, as we look at some of these where, where I see big blanks, the 18, certificate of occupancy, work with your contractor and inspect to ensure all building and safety codes have been met. Now, if they're, they're doing their own general contracting, that's going to be an issue. And so other, it just says final building inspection, but, but somewhere, you know, don't they, they contact the office to get all the inspector?
We should, yeah, we should, we should, excuse me, reverse 18 and 19 because they don't get the CEO until I go out and inspect the site one final time and then we can, we should specifically reference that new document we have.
And, and when would the, you say planner or engineer, how would they know which to get the final?
Doesn't matter, one of us, we could just say city staff.
And then, then I would like to see, like you say, that if, if there are documents that are associated with this, typically that can be a category two, here's the, here's the documents you would need. I think, you know, you've got that
List of documents or something?
Yeah, so, so again, if you need a, whatever documents you would need signed off here, you could put that, put a column there for that. I think we've got, we could tighten this up, certainly our numberings could be smaller, we could do some things to, because that way, oh, I need this document. So looking at the matrix, they know what documents they need, similar to the checklist, you can say, here's what I need to do this.
Or how about if we made like the document, if it's an official document, it's in red or something?
That's a good
Yeah, because when, when you and I talked about this last year, Liz, it was, you know, the, the process flow that I was looking at is, who does what, what are they doing and what, what do they need to get it done? So the, the what and the how are the middle category, who on the left, and then the documents are referenced, so you go right to it and say, oh, I need document XYZ.
And Lisa's done a good job in the office at, yeah, categorizing, like naming the documents and having that reference on the bottom of everything, so that's, that's good.
So, so in that, Lisa, are you, you're putting a, a document number and do you put a rev level too? When you're identifying documents in the office, Liz was just saying that you're doing a good job bringing the documents up to speed.
Yeah.
Putting, putting document numbers on them.
Well, I do not put a document number, I am just putting updated on the date and then if you look at the bottom of like this, you know.
There's a title.
Yeah, and then, so the title's here, the date last updated.
And what was the other, the revision is what you
Revision, yeah.
Yeah.
So do you need to add, rather than updated date, you want revision number next to the updated date?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray.
In, in my mind, an update is a revision.
Right, yeah.
So I would just say revision.
Okay.
And that to me is more standard and
So just revised October
Yep.
First, okay.
Yeah. And then, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray.
Question I have is on page two, number 10.
Of the matrix?
Of the matrix, yes. Back to the training that we had for council and the P&amp;Z members, Attorney Rupi mentioned that the landowners, property owner, homeowner needs to sign off. And we brought, that was brought up last meeting, where are we in the process of getting that included into the, the finalization?
Attorney Rupi provided me a one-sentence, you know, claim disclaimer, I hereby agree to the conditions established herein or something like that, that he wants on all CUPs, no IUPs. So that's
I don't know, I thought it was the opposite, IUPs not CUPs.
Sorry, you're right, it's IUPs not CUPs.
Okay.
Yes, so, and then, and then we provided spots for notarizing on those, yeah. So you'll see the, well, yeah, like the Jones, I think I had it on the Jones.
You did. You did.
I said, I didn't, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray.
I, I looked for it and it's very possible I missed it, but I did not see it, that's why I just wanted to bring that up again.
We'll double check. So do you have anyone specific in mind that you'd like to review this document?
Well, I would, I would have a couple that was in here tonight. If anybody's going to find anything.
That'll be her, okay.
Yeah, it'd be
That's, okay, and then how about maybe a, like Larry Schoquist or one of the developer?
Good idea.
I think so.
What if they don't agree to, they say no, should we have some backup plan?
Who else we have recently that does that?
Let's see, minor subdivision. Brian Fendle's Schoquist, okay. You know, I'd like to have do it, but Mr., guy that did the four lot split over on Burns Parkway, Pocie.
Pocie.
He moved them, does anyone know, have contacted, phone for him? No?
For who?
Mark Pocie, P-O-C-E, no?
He's right off, Now Then, Olive Garden, Burns Parkway.
How about that couple that was in here and they all live in their trailer while they built their home and we all agreed to it?
Oh, but they didn't do a split or anything? You know, it was just a temporary moving situation?
I thought it came up, I have the P&amp;Z, I'll have to go back to my P&amp;Z packet because I was pretty sure it was there.
Do we have anybody coming up that we could ask, like to go through the process with them? Somebody coming into the scenario of
Yeah, the, the one, we have a potential, remember the Hafes, the Tiger Man on Verde Valley? His lot is owned by someone else who's now really cleaned it up and he wants to do a split. So the only possible way is a flag lot. So that's coming through for review at P&amp;Z. But he, I could show him this, but otherwise, I can't think of any. We've got the Schoquist are coming through again, but, I'll think, I'll think of someone else.
Well, I think with, with that, you know, as we it just seems like there should be, and each, each number on the matrix should have some responsible party that they, who do I talk to to schedule closings?
Okay.
Following recording of all documents, the sale, transfer of land may occur and applicant may proceed with building plans. So what closings are we scheduling and with whom are we doing it?
Well, the problem is, is that the, the matrix applies to splits and variances and, you know, IUPs, so you can't get super specific, but I guess
Yeah, but we don't have anything, I mean, there's just
Yeah, I, I agree with that, I'll read through it. I guess if it doesn't apply, it doesn't apply, you know?
Yep. If applicable, who do you talk to? Not applicable, ignore them.
Okay.
All right, so we've got right now the, then the application schedule, so people have some idea if you, if you want
And just for your own reference, we moved the application submission date back to allow extra time. We were just too rushed or Shane was typically more busy that he wasn't having enough time for review, so we used to be the first of the month and now we moved it back to the third Tuesday. We were the first Tuesday, we moved it back to the third Tuesday of the prior. So it's a little because it gives you that 10-day window for a review and then if they're incomplete, they, you know, you could still possibly accommodate, but flats are, yeah, more extensive in their review too.
All right, and then the minor subdivision checklist, again, I think having those that are subdividing go through that, they can pick it apart before we do. My, my only question is, maybe it's my eyes, font's a little small and a little hard to read, might be the copy, but
Okay.
Well, I, I don't agree. I've got worse eyes than you at mine, so. I, I think the font's pretty good. I mean, you read what most font is nowadays, I, I
I'm, I'm just looking at the, at the clarity when I look at the consulting fees checklist compared to the minor subdivision checklist, it just, it's crisper on the one.
I think
This is a copy.
Yeah, I think it's been scanned, so it's
It's not as crisp as the usual.
Yeah.
Well, it's a lot of information.
So one, one of the things on the consultant fees checklist and acceptance statement, I have not seen one of these come through where a box has ever actually been checked.
Oh, yeah, some of them are, but not all of them. They basically just have to read it and remember, this was a, an optional thing to inform people of the estimated cost.
It was until the state.
It was, pardon me?
The state statute now requires it. The state statute now requires it.
Uh.
With the, the consulting fees checklist.
Hmm, are you sure about that?
Yeah, it's right there, starting August first, twenty nineteen, Minnesota state statute requires all cities to provide.
No, upon request, though, so.
Yeah, but we had, we had set it as a city, we want it as a policy to say.
Right.
Do you understand that?
Right, correct.
And so, it says the city has provided the estimate of the consultant fees to the applicant. And, and so, this is the first time I've seen pages three through five attached to it.
Well, that was Lisa's idea of, you know, why, we had a chart before, but why recreate the wheel if we've already got all these things listed in our fee schedule?
Yep.
Um, and I, and then she highlighted on page five, or four, rather, um.
Well, I added in.
Some of the disclaimers.
Some of the disclaimers that were on the previous form about that the fees and expenses are due whether the application is approved or denied. That's not in our actual fee schedule, but it was on the application before, so felt it necessary that we put that in there. I'm not re, you know, I'm not changing the fee schedule, I'm just making this document.
Yeah, I would, I would say right now on, on page four, ten A, we, we put in attorney's fees, engineering fees and planning fees as they are today.
That is today's fees as far as I'm under.
Yeah, we did up those.
I did, yeah.
Yeah, those were changed.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it, it's something we have to remember that if you're gonna put something like that in there and they change, we have to get rid of this revision.
Well, right, and that's why it says revise, it will say revise October first, and I guess whoever does this, you know, going forward from whenever they need to be informed, I don't know how you, I personally don't know when those fees are established with the city council, like when does Attorney Ruby let you know his fees are changing? And how do you communicate that to staff that that has taken place?
Yeah, and that was communicated to staff previously, uh, you just, again, from my auditing background, you always look for that, who knows that that's in there that they have to go back and change when one of the consultants changed their fees?
Right, but when?
So, either, one, one option is not have the fees in there, it's attorney's fees, engineering fees and, and planning fees, and, and they can ask, what are those? And we can say currently they're this.
Okay.
I was just gonna say, it's somewhat irrelevant because they gotta pay it.
It is what it is, but at least they know. And I appreciate the effort to say, currently if you're, if attorney fees, it's gonna be two hundred and ten bucks an hour. But because it's changing and if, if this, if there's hard copies laying around, somebody needs to know. And as you say, who's going to communicate, oh, by the way, that changes, city now the consultant fees, page four, and the, it comes in the day you're not here or the week you're on vacation and somebody doesn't know it's in there, so. Somebody'll come back and wave that in our face going, well, you're charging me a hundred and thirteen dollars. Or you're charging a hundred and twenty dollars, but it says here a hundred and thirteen.
Well, I think the only reason she included it was because the example that we had originally used from LMC was included it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I, I would agree with two to just take it out, you don't want it in there.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake.
Now, are these fees like, okay, the attorney is two-ten hours, so what if, we had a conversation for fifteen minutes with him, then is he prorated or is it included, is this considered?
He goes in fifteen minute increments.
Okay, so the total is two-ten, but he'll go in fifteen minute increments?
Yeah.
And I bill in tenths of an hour.
I'm not gonna talk to you.
Not fair, is it?
I'm tenth.
Two seconds, that's it.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, if, if the, if the attorney gives you five minutes, it's fifteen.
Yep.
If he gives you thirty-one minutes, it's forty-five.
So, we're gonna get releases, everybody agreed that?
So, just remove the dollar, but keep in attorney and.
Yes.
Yes.
And I would like to see on page five, situations tend to increase building development fees or overall costs associated with submissions related requests, I'd like to see that in bold.
I was thinking that the statement on page four that says all fees and expenses are due, that maybe we could make bigger and put over with this other one that's highlighted, yeah. But, and either way, it's, yeah, I agree, that could be in red too or something, or bold.
I think bold so it won't look like it's a change, but.
I didn't hear all of that.
Just making this, uh, this statement here bold or, or red.
And Liz, which one were you talking about?
I was talking about pulling, uh, all fees and expenses are due whether the application is approved or denied, either making it bigger or.
I think, I think bold.
Bold, maybe, yeah.
Keep it in its current spot, but just make it bold?
I think so.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayburn.
To Ms. Stockman and, and, um, Ms. Lawrenson, I, it could be my eyes, but am I seeing two different fonts? We wanna be consistent, so am I seeing two different fonts between page four and page five? Page five looks like a bigger.
I believe you are, because this was just cut and pasted from the fee schedule.
I, I, I slayed it, I.
Yeah, yep, no, and so, I guess to make it easier, I'll have to figure out which is which and just make it all the same.
Yeah, and then you could shift on, a little more on to page five, so it's not so crowded looking, yeah, so, yeah. I noticed that too.
Yeah.
I just didn't know it was me.
It was just for, just to, yeah, we can fine tune it, so I, yeah.
I think everything looks really good, it's obvious you put a lot of work into it, yeah, I appreciate that.
I like it. If I don't, I'm sick.
You won't need this, it's just here.
No, I got all this knowledge now, I don't need any of this stuff.
No, but you can have your, she had at the end of your driveway now.
I will, I'm gonna put you in to catch the bus.
So, so again, um, pointing out, we, we said on page five, that second paragraph was bolded, I, I, I do like the one in front of that too, you can keep the cost down if you bring detailed plans prepared by professional surveyors and architects, you know, again, make it hard to miss.
Yeah, yep.
All right?
So, one final comment, Mr. Mayor, on.
Minor Stockman.
The site and building plan review.
Yeah.
Is a document that I now include with all the building permit reviews. So, what was happening was there was a little gap between me reviewing a building permit for setbacks, height and all these things, and then I would have these conditions possibly attached, but those weren't getting put into the minspecs documents, so I said, okay, well, what good are they then? They have to be somewhere where the contractor and the owner see them, so I said, I'm gonna just stop with the emails and I'm gonna create a document that you attach to your packet so that they can see every single thing that I look at and whether or not they're, you know, in compliance. So, um, but that also helps people that wanna build know, to know what I look for. And then, uh, so that's what the red, you know, on the page three is the conditions of approval.
No, I, I think that's gonna be very helpful.
Yes.
So, I think with all the discussions we've had this year and all the concerns expressed by residents, I think this has gone a long way to remedying that, so we just, um, like I said, run it by people that have used it, get any other feedback, um, and how we keep it together, like you say, if this is attached to their document, everybody'll see that, so that's, that's again, maybe part of your checklist on, within the, the office staff, have we done this? I mean, is there somewhere on your checklist that this got attached to that?
Well, yeah, her checklist tonight was only for public hearings, right?
Right.
But overall checklist, uh, you mean like on this thing or something else?
Well.
Or inter-office?
In, inter-office, so that, that again, like you say, if somebody's doing this on the days Lisa's off, do they know that, oh, yep, I did this, I did this, oh, I got that and I attached this here?
Well, this is gonna be, this is only me for a zoning review, but this is something that can be in the roundabout thing that people can take as a reference document also.
Yeah, but I'm saying, in this case, you did it for Brian's Ben.
Oh, I see, does Ellen know, for instance?
Yes.
To attach this when she approves the?
Whoever is gonna process it in the office, there should be a checklist that says, I got this, I got this, and I got this, and there's your packet.
Got you, yeah.
Um, yes, it's good to have it out there, somebody comes in and says, I know I need to do this. But like you're saying, you've done it, somebody else is picking up, are we redundant? Or did, I thought you did it, you thought they did it?
Okay, I get what you're saying.
And, and so if Lisa knows, Ellen knows, everybody in the office knows, this and this and this go together.
All together, right.
We do currently have a inner office checklist for building applications and, um, that has recently been created regarding if it's a set fee building permit or a valuation permit, the process in the office is a checklist. And so, it could just easily be added to that, that, that that was received.
Very good.
All right. So, at this point, we'll, we'll run that by a, a few people, say, what do you think? Get their feedback, and then we can, can move ahead. Good job. Appreciate it, this, this has been a long time coming and, and it's good to get things out of head and onto paper and, and I think this will remedy a lot of the concerns that have been expressed to us over a period of time, so.
Okay, great.
All right. Well, we beat eight-thirty.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayburn.
There's nothing else, and we'll adjourn.
I second.
All right, we are adjourned.
Should, do we tell this all about tonight?
I, um. Say no?